Okay, so uh in that case, uh it is seven oh two, looks like we've got six of the seven members. Of the working group, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um so, I'll uh. First order of business is the approval of the October third, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Uh did everyone get a chance to review? I know Aaron pushed those out uh later today.
Yeah, I read it a few minutes ago. I do have a question on it.
I didn't, I didn't see them. I just walked in the door.
Um Robin, do you or Matt and Julie, do you get a chance to review the the meeting minutes?
I did not. I I wasn't present, so I was gonna stay anyways.
I looked through them quickly.
Okay, uh Robin, did you wanna? Uh relay your your questions?
Um on the second page midway under uh public comments. All of a sudden it mentions a Yuval school and I didn't understand had that anything to do with state requirements and. I didn't even know what the school name that I was just curious what that meant.
So that was uh Mike McLean jumped on at that time and he I talked about a few times about. Looking at that area, so that's the school that's over off uh Greenwood Street and so he talked about using that land. And you know, even though knowing it's open space and this was prior to us telling him that land doesn't count. Um how we could use that area to do higher density. So I just alluded to, he brought that up a couple of times. So I just wanted to make sure that was covered.
So it wasn't about the school, it's about the parcel the school's on?
Uh correct. So I mean, I could add, I can amend it to do property if that to make things a little more clear.
It would for me, but not a not a huge deal. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Um so I can motion for approval of the minutes.
A second.
Okay, so we have a uh motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented from October third. Twenty twenty-three meeting, I'll start with uh Aaron Kokinda.
Yes.
Matt Bowen.
Abstent.
Greg McIntosh.
I I hadn't seen them yet. I just walked in.
Okay. Uh I take that as an abstention in that case.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Okay.
If we have enough to pass him, yeah.
Yeah, Julie Smith Galvin.
Yes.
Uh and Rob uh Robin Greenberg.
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so four to zero with one absence and two abstentions. Okay, so in that case, we'll move on to item number three, the discussion for the working group. So um couple of things have been occurring uh since the last time we met, the first being that the we have the. Um a couple of meetings with various groups. So Aaron, you wanna kind of walk through the groups that you presented the the group to and. Uh provide any feedback as it relates to anything you hear back from, I believe it was um. The Council on Aging and uh environmental sustainability.
Yeah, um I just gave them the pre- the basic presentation that uh Jim ran through as well. I think Julie was that she was at the Environmental Sustainability Committee. Um really just generic questions. I think a number of those people involved in that group are familiar with. But well, I'm Robin, sorry, Robin. We've already presented to them, so they're really familiar with kind of what's in the pipeline. Um I don't recall there being any um. Any real questions um about it, just clarification and things like that and the work that we've done. Uh Robin and Julie, I don't know if you have anything to mention. Nothing's really sticking out right now on the top of my head.
Um I I'm actually double checking the notes um. In case I miss anything, but uh generally supportive of the initiative. Supportive of, you know, thinking on less parking, um but. Knowing that, you know, that isn't necessarily a popular opinion. Didn't, they didn't um make, you know, any general comments about. The boundaries too much.
No. Sorry, Tyron, you're presenting to really have takeaways. And then the Council on Aging, um same thing, I ran through it um pretty quickly. Uh there was some questions about senior house, you know, I think what you would expect if there we uh if we could. You know, mandate senior housing, um questions about accessibility, affordability. Uh just clarified a number of things there. I felt like the group, you know, wanted to take it when I presented and just digested a little. I let them know about the public meeting. Uh but overall, I, you know, I can't say it was positive, negative. It was just a more informational session. And um many of them did not know about it, so I spent more time on the background information of that than than um probably the other meeting I did. So. Um yeah, overall, it was, it was good.
Yep, and then the uh. We also had a meeting with the ZBA and I think that a lo- a number of the comments from the ZBA meeting were materially similar to the public forums that were held with for the planning board. I know Greg, if there's any other major takeaways you had from the from the meeting with the ZBA.
No, everyone I think was fairly receptive to our proposal. It didn't seem, you know, it seems like the in the public, there's a lot of pushback to completely. To the minimum, but we didn't hear that from the ZBA.
So and then additionally, we had uh meetings on October twenty-fourth and November fourteenth with the planning board. Uh I'll get into that a little more substantively, but there's a couple of things I wanna um run through while we still have Aaron. Additionally, the bylaw, we've continued to refine and try to um update that. Uh I know that Aaron uh pushed. A copy of the bylaw to Town Council Mullen. Uh I went through and tried to do a redline copy. So Aaron, you wanna kind of provide an update as it relates to. Where we need to get to on the bylaw for to accommodate the town meeting schedule and then we can kind of walk through where we where we stand today.
Yeah, so I'll kind of work backwards. So yeah, so I um shared this information with uh Town Administrator Mayo, kind of where we're at with our bylaw. I've shared it with him. As a few uh internal folks, um and then uh Steve did push it to um um Town Council Mullen. And so he kind of reached out to his network of um other councils throughout uh the state to see if they could send other examples, because I thought might be a good way for us to pull. Different things from that. And I know Steve and um Tom would both like to review the bylaw um once we have something better set in stone. Uh but you know, after my discussions with Steve and Tom as well, we were talking about what that schedule needs to look like for us to go to town council. And it's a little sooner than I was um anticipating. I think this group was anticipating. So um kind of how the steps work is we'll have to go to town council by the end of January. Um so I did have, I'm sorry, I don't have that open in front of me right now. Um. But um we'll have to go the last meeting in January to do a um then re- be referred to the planning board. Um the planning board will then have to set public meeting uh public hearings, so two public hearings for that. Uh which would uh again bring us probably into. Mid-February, end of February, based on the posting. Um so kind of a quick turnaround to make sure that we're ready for town meeting in April and have to make any changes that we need to make. So. I think we best need to be prepared for this bylaw. And again, it's kind of a, and I think, you know. Town Council Mullen really has to have the sign off from us. We can make some edits, but I think ultimately he he's the one that knows what's gonna work and what's not. Um and so. Um I think we just need to plug away at that and um figure out what language works best and and then maybe he can kind of clean it up for us as well. Is that what you wanted?
Yeah, so. So I think, you know, if we need to get the language nailed down for the end of January. So I know that we've had, we went through it initially. Uh it looked like that. There were a handful of changes that we we had talked about previously, so that's what is reflective of the red lines that Aaron distributed out to the to the group. In terms of where we stood. Additionally, I know that there was some e- feedback we solicited from town staff. Uh Aaron, have we gotten back any of that feedback we were requesting from either Concom or Engineering?
So I haven't received anything um from engineering yet. Uh I know Bill's team was working um pretty hard. On uh he had one of his guys, engineers, working on kind of looking at what the actual lot, what. Would be the ideal lot size to fit everything that we're proposing, uh but I have not yet received that. Uh Concom, I did reach out, um but I I've yet to really. Sit down with them, so I don't have anything at the current time. What I have.
Aaron, have they given a sense of when they would have stuff thinking about the fact if we need things done by end of January?
Sorry, it was muted again. Um I do think that I thought the timeline was a little longer, so I thought that um we'd have more time, but I will definitely put like a full. High press on them next week. Uh Bill said it should be done soon. This was about a week ago. Um you know, we've been, if you haven't been paying attention, then I'm pulled in a lot of different directions for the bike pad. It's not an excuse, but um I know his team is working on it and I can shoot an email. Um and then also sit down uh with um Rebecca next week and just kind of sit down and go through it as well uh for the conservation. But honestly, I think our, there's a lot of work still to be done with the before even the site plan approval and what we're looking for. Um when it just comes to the language itself, um with, you know, purpose, establishment and um and things like that. So. Um I think, you know, a lot of these parts, we need to um kind of work on as well, but I will definitely. Uh try to get you guys something next week from the different groups for us to to talk about.
So just for clarity, Aaron, you said that a lot of work needs to be done on the establishment purpose. Are you talking about? Additional work, the additional feedback you need to get from other members? Are you talking referring to the work that this group needs to do?
I don't know why I keep muting myself. I think this group needs to do. Um I was uh kind of going through your um. Cleaned up version too, and I think that's something I said, you know, let's try to make this shorter, but then I was going through the Quincy and and Lexington. And I think there's some good language that should be added. I don't know if that's, you know, you and I have talked about doing the draft bylaw and. Um I've spent more time on that, um but I think that that's something that maybe this group could help with as well. Um in kind of making sure that we have everything covered. Um because I think there's some sections we may be missing um from the beginning to that are best explaining what this what this bylaw is. Especially if it's gonna be its own section. I don't know if anyone had a chance to take a look through or has any feedback or input. Um but that's kind of what I think. And I was kind of working on it this afternoon too with um some of my comments, but I didn't get it all the way through.
So I I didn't have a chance to look at it, but one thing that kind of struck me from the public meetings is. We should limit how different it appears from other zoning applica- other portions of our zoning and only. Change where we feel is very important to get people to agree to it. Um so you know. Not add. Some things that might be nice. But may just be the tipping point to getting approval, you know.
Robin, do you mind expanding on that a little bit um from the public?
Well, I mean, just in general, I think that this isn't a. We don't have a community that's completely excited about it. And so if it's if a lot of the sections are similar to what's already allowed in the different zones. Then, you know. The story is that we're not looking to change things, you know, when, I mean, we we've talked about, you know, do we have requirements for bike parking and um.
Oh, that's.
That's the first one that comes to mind. I don't know why.
Yeah.
Um so but we don't have that anywhere else. So you know, maybe. Just getting this established is the first step and then, you know, that there's other things on top of it.
So essentially, I think, Robin, you're saying, keep it. Basically, the debate is only over the um. Overlay the actual district rather than, so we have, yeah, okay, this multifamily is by right, but you know, height. Uh setback and all those still say, which I think is what we've been.
Yep, dimensionally, we've done that already. Yeah, I just, we've talked about some other provisions that may be available to have included, and that's what I'm. Thinking that, you know, maybe not too much of that.
Yep, so I I would, I would propose that we do, based on this, you know, the the feedback we've gotten, is I'd propose, so we we have a. A copy, I pulled up a copy, if people can see it, of I'll call it the cleanup version that I tried to pair out and. You know, based on some of the further conversations, uh strip out some of the elements that may or may not be required. What I would propose that this group does, we go through this. And we try to um determine, you know, if 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 there's any high level feedback we can give as we're trying to, you know. Refine this such that we could take that language and. Push it across, um unless there's, and you know, Aaron, I I would encourage if there's other things that you think that we should add to this. Um you know, if we go through this, you know, highlighting what you think makes sense. Um just because I, you know, without. You know, you know, without having, you know, having the feedback that there's other things that are missing. Without knowing what the the proposed missing elements are, it's tough to respond to that. But I don't know if other people feel as if that's the best use of everyone's time for this to try to progress this element.
I'm happy to take a further look at it, probably next week. At this point, I I gave. Some comments a while back, so they may not even be applicable anymore, but I could do the same thing. You know, I'm I'm happy to. To do that. I don't know if everyone needs to do it, but. That's sort of what I do on a daily basis.
Yeah, I have to say, we do have a lawyer on the call, so um. The one thing I did notice, Jim, is I think that would be per uh important, and again, I don't need to go into the weeds here, um but is. I think we do need to have a purpose that's other than, you know, we're just abiding by the section three A of the zoning act. Um I know there was a bunch of bullet points that I had before about prior, you know, economic development. Uh but I noticed Quincy had like three or four bullets where they're trying to, they highlight creating um more diverse housing within town, things like that, just so it's a little, we're not just. Which we are doing this because of the state mandate, but there's also other benefits of why we're creating this district, and I think that's something that maybe we should be highlighting.
That that was an intentional choice and we can discuss whether or not it was appropriate. On the basis of the feedback we got from Attorney Bumbrowski. For the other zoning recodification where. He recommended not providing a long list of purposes. Because it gives people standing in case uh you know, in you may be unintentionally giving someone standing to provide provide legal challenges. Whereas that just have, this is the zoning. And you know, all of the, I'll call it commentary, in terms of the purpose and for the purpose for establishment. Is um not in the zoning, then that prevents, he he advocated that prevented you from. Uh unintentionally opening up a a legal pathway for a challenge to a project on a specific product.
But I will listen to an attorney.
I assume that Greg is the attorney on the call. Do you agree with that? Or is that something we should run by Tom Mullen?
Yeah, I would ask Tom. I mean, I don't have any experience in that law. So I. I think that's probably technically correct, but is it sort of nitpicking possibly? Because it it seems like you have. If you're aggrieved, you have standing in court anyways, no matter what. If you're an injured party, you have, no matter what the law says, so um but I, yeah, I'm. Sort of take Tom's direction at that.
Yeah, I I think we run that by Tom without just kind of taking it at face value.
And Matt, you're an attorney as well, aren't you?
I am.
Yeah.
Uh my my thought is. Is if you. Have the purpose being complying with the MBTA Communities Directive. Uh from the legislature, they're gonna look at the legislative legislative purpose of of that and basically port it right on to whatever. If you say it's to comply with this, they're gonna look further back and see what the purpose of that is. It's gonna be bootstrapped right to it, so it's something to discuss with the with Mr. Mullen, but.
And I think the legislative intent was those bullet points that you're talking about.
Exactly. Well, that's what I would say. So if that was the legislative intent, then I think we repeat them here.
I mean, it's right out of the sample bylaw, if I remember right.
A number.
I guess at the end of the day, I don't have a strong view on that either way.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
So for the for the non-lawyer, what's the? Benefit of listing a purpose of a zoning as opposed to just giving them the zoning? What does the purpose mean in terms of anything?
Oh, so for example, like I was just looking at one ninety thirty-two, which is our multifamily mixed use, and it's. Talking about the intent, it's to encourage development of attractall functional multifamily dwellings, mixed use projects to create street level activity, blah, blah, blah. Just tries to give you a background of why the zoning was created. Um but I guess to their point too, it kind of refers back to the the state law, which would then cover. All those, you know, why it is being created um without having to list it all out. Uh the one ninety thirty-two is just a local bylaw, so it I think that is important to list out, but um that's a that's a valid point.
Okay. So then if we go, if you go past the uh the establishment. Um where it's talking about that the purpose of it is to allow multifamily dwellings as a right in accordance with three A. Uh and that's an overlay district. Um. So we've got the applicability and the underlying zoning uh. And then it goes into permitted uses. I I did have a cou- couple of questions, Aaron, as it relates to uh. I didn't, I didn't get a chance to go run down all of these, you know, the section one nineties within our bylaw. Um but is there? What, because when it said notwithstanding all those, do you know what what the purpose of or where this came from?
So I think I pulled, that was a mixture of uh pulling from the the multifamily dwellings, mixed use development. We have some language there. Um I don't, I had, I wrote here, I'm not sure if we need this. That was a question I was gonna throw back to Tom Mullen. Um. It because it, those different sections refer to um, you know, not one ninety thirteen's mixed use, uh one ninety thirty-two is multi- a mixed use multifamily. Um so I would need to to throw that back to him. Um I don't know if he's loo- looking at it now, um but we may not need that.
Okay. Okay. Uh in that case, then then we go into the dimensional standards. Right now. We've currently got the lot size, the four thousand to match the mixed use zoning. Three stories, thirty-five foot maximum to match that. Uh that space, minimum open space also matches it. This is, I think, one of the ones that. We just gotta validate if that's where we wanna want it to be on the basis of the conversations with engineering, but that's an easy. Change based on on that number can get ramped up or down if we think that we need to change it. Um. Max maximum building coverage, this similar conversation as it relates to, you know, just need to validate that with uh engineering. And then we matched all the. Minimum, right now, I think the intent was to match all the the. Setbacks that we currently have in there. I think we need, it looks like we need that. I think it's a hundred feet. The frontage. And then all the rest of them. Um and then we currently have. The multi-building lots where they have more than one principal building and that we limit it. So it doesn't apply the maximum height to chimneys and all these other different ornamental features. I know we're kind of trying to go through this, but is there anything in particular that anyone has any questions, concerns, or wanted to talk about more further in that specific section?
Did we talk about anywhere um about the the um four units? I noticed that was, we didn't have language about that anywhere unless I quickly looked through it again, so like. It's also as well as the the one thousand square feet, at least. Uh minimum unit, I believe. I didn't, we don't have any language about that, do we? And do we need that?
I don't know what you're talking about in terms of.
I don't, yeah, I don't see where we list.
One thousand.
So the lot area per dwell, so we have that, sorry?
No, I don't see where we listed it's a maximum of four units.
I think you're right. I think that's missing.
That is missing as well as the lot area per dwelling unit.
I think with the lot area per dwelling unit, we didn't include because with a four thousand minimum lot, that's would be for the one thousand. One thousand square feet per unit that already mi- automatically gets to the four four units. Which is the maximum number of units, so it's a redundant requirement.
But the thousand's not listed either.
No, I'm saying that if if we have a four thousand minimum. Square foot lot and the maximum number of units is four, then having a mac, a minimum one thousand square feet for the lot. Per. Unit on the dwell or unit. It's it becomes redundant.
Oh, thousand per unit of lot, yes. I was thinking um minimum unit size, sorry. But yes, there's nowhere that says how many units you're limited to.
Just testing that to make sure we're correct. If they had a s- I don't know, seven thousand square foot lot, they couldn't put eight?
Yeah, we're limiting.
Or or subdivided, yeah, okay.
No, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So anything over four, no matter what the lot size is, yeah.
Unless they subdivide into two separate lots, yeah, and then you still, yeah, got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'd do like an A and R, as long as you could actually meet the the. Frontage and access requirements, and then that becomes as a right for two separate four unit, four thousand square foot lots or some combination thereof. Um okay, that's a good good catch on the max four units. You gotta make sure we list that, since that's a major component of the of it. Uh parking, I think we just had, this is a pretty straightforward one in terms of what we're. Currently proposing. This number may or may not change, but at least in terms of the way the bylaw structure to seem, didn't seem to that there was any.
So if we're trying to match the zoning bylaws as much as possible. Do we want to incorporate in here instead of just the straight one point five, the fact that it's, you know, one point five for two two bedrooms or less and. Two for three bedrooms? If we're look trying to match everything, I think this is gonna be another. I don't know, spark point, if you wanna call it that, uh uh in addition to. Um. The actual overlay district. I think one of the big things you hear about a lot is parking and traffic. So for if we are gonna stay true to the spirit of match the bylaw as much as, the current bylaw as much as possible. We can do that here also. Obviously, we'll see mostly two bedrooms and below, but there there might be some three bedrooms.
I think it really depends on if we think that that one point, because we, there was also some conversations. Where I think we're trying to get on the conver- uh on the agenda with the. Traffic advisory committee. And I think that they had internally had some concerns as it relates to providing that number of parking spaces and they wanted the number to go down. So I hear what you're saying, Greg. I don't know. I think there's a pushing to pull, and I'm not sure exactly I know which one is the right number, yeah.
Yeah, but if we do come to the no, we're just matching the the zoning bylaw, we should add that, but yeah, understood where we stand in the process, okay?
Okay, um. In terms of the general site standards, there's a handful of these that. We still had notes from the last time we did this, where we had, you know, uh comments for Concom feedback, but a no- a number of the rest of them. Uh I tried to clean up as much possible compared to and incorporate the notes we had previously. So if you see anything, just let me know and then we can flag it to follow up on, but. For the general development standards. And the reason we would include the du- these standards or even not might not on other projects is because this is, since it's as a right, it would not. Potentially be subject to the same review process, which is something we need to get into later anyway, but for the site design, there's. The connections as it relates to sidewalks, providing a direct connection among the building entrance, I think we didn't seem controversial last time we looked at it. Vehicular entrance where, you know, basically saying curb cuts shall be minimized. Parking materials, maybe concrete, asphalt, decompro- uh decomposed granite, bricks or pavers, including uh previous materials, but. No grass or soil within the uh within a paver or other structure for the parking material. We had a couple of comments related to planting and lighting in terms of um whether the the keeping the plants native. And not using uh anything on the map prohibitive plant list. And then the light levels shall meet or exceed the um. Or shall, yeah, shall we receive the minimum design guidelines for the uh illuminating standards. Uh as listed and to reduce it to, you know, prevent sky glow. And then stormwater management, we edited this section to just refer to uh section one seventy for the Wakefield Stormwater Bylaw and associated requirements. Anything anyone sees that red red flags or things that. Would wanna warrant further scrutiny? Okay.
I mean, I know it was discussed at a meeting, sorry that people would like. I don't know if we have have any language about staying true to the neighborhood character. Do we have anything language, like what the the what the building and the aesthetics look like? I know that was brought up, I heard it like twice in a at the meeting.
So I heard that too, and I I mean, that seems to be. We don't have anything like, yeah, I would say no, we don't have anything like that now. And if you look around, there are some. Buildings that I think look nice, but don't stay true, like there's some, like, uh what is it? Uh. Are they on Prospect Street, like?
On Prospect, yeah.
Um modern houses, they look awesome, but those aren't. True to the neighborhood character, and I I we don't have anything like that now. Um. True to the neighborhood character and I, I, we don't have anything like that now, um. And I know that.
I, I agree, I, that's pretty subjective as well, like how do you?
Just wanted to bring that up if it was, I, you know, the public did ask about that, so I thought it would be worth noting and bringing up.
If anyone could build a single family in any style.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I find that some single or some. New construction maybe in the characters others, but I find it all ugly, so it doesn't mean I want another one, you know, like.
Yeah, no, that was a good point, Eric, but I, I think it's overstepping.
Okay, uh, the next one I've got on here is, uh. The ones as it relates to the position relative to the principal street and the entries. Uh, I think we looked at this last time and we all seemed to agree that those ones, those ones didn't. Made sense as currently.
Question on that, that B. And only because I could look across the street, it says entry shall be cleared and linked to a paved pedestrian network that includes the public sidewalk. Not every street has public sidewalks. Not even every main street has public sidewalks. This, is that even workable? I mean, they just, did they just input sidewalks on Byron Street, but they still didn't do it on both sides of the street all the way down, so there's houses. The current, that don't have, or, you know, places that don't have sidewalks all the way down both streets.
Public street or public, like, public way as implying that. That the public owns often land on the edge of a road in order. To in the future put a sidewalk, right? So you just have to connect to that.
The public right of way or something?
Yeah, I don't.
So, yeah, I think just careful with the wording there.
Does that make sense? Just add or right of way?
I don't, I don't know if that's the right word to describe the. With, you know, land that could be a sidewalk, but it's not a sidewalk.
I think that makes sense because it could, I mean, it could include the street too, it just needs to connect to somewhere in them.
Yeah, I think the right of way might be the right language. Right about the right language, but we can confirm that too with Tom.
Yeah, that makes sense. Uh, the next one we got was, so this one I, I did a little wordsmithing based on feedback from the working group. The way that the shared outdoor space was originally written was that it required a common. Outdoor space and we, we had some, uh, feedback that the. It doesn't necessarily have to be common, it could be, you know, on a per call, per unit allocation, so I tried to wordsmith it. To fit that intent, but I'd love to get a gut check whether or not I. Fit the basis or people are, uh, have additional edits.
Yeah, man, this is probably more for your background. How is open space fully calculated now? Like it says, all outdoor space shall count towards project's minimum open space requirement. And we say it can be. Uh, rooftop or terrace, is a rooftop or terrace included in open space? I wouldn't think so, but I don't really, that, I don't specialize in that on the zoning board, we let the architect and.
Yeah, my guess is that it's not. I mean, I would imagine that open space, unless it's like, um, green, you know, or you know what I mean?
Yeah, so then I think we need to make sure that, so that, that sentence there that says all outdoor space shall count towards the project's minimum open space requirement. Doesn't root in things like rooftop or terrace, so it should say like, if, I don't know. We might need to look at the language, but if otherwise applicable, or, or just take that out together, it, I mean. Open space is already defined, I believe.
Yeah, it's in our definitions and there's a couple, there's a open space usable, uh, there's open space landscapes. Um, and it says, uh, I think open space landscape developed for the use of the occupants of the property located upon. A roof not more than ten feet above the level of the lowest story, like, I didn't read the whole thing, but there are some definitions here that we may. Wanna pull from and just change the language.
Does it make, I mean, I think Greg's comment that if we just remove this. That line that I highlighted, if that makes it easier to read and is more clear, that might be. The path of least resistance.
I mean, under where it could be located, you're already saying rooftops, so that. Opens it up to, you know, alternative kind of thinking.
Right, outdoor space and open space, two different. Concepts.
Hmm, yeah. So, so are you suggesting that this paragraph be about building shared open space? So just changing the, um.
I think you just take out that sentence, we, they need to have outdoor space. If it's part of their open space by definition, it, then it's, it's already roped in, if not, we, we don't need to talk about it and. Our requirement to have outdoor space.
Unless I hear any other objection to that, I think that makes sense. Okay, uh, in that case, the next one is, uh, building on corner lots, which I think we. If we talked about last time, I don't recall if there's any controversy, but this basis says. Building on a corner lot shall indicate a primary entrance either along one of the street faces as the primary corner and entrance serving both streets. Such entry shall be connected by paved sidewalk to the, um. To the public sidewalk if applicable and all facades. Visible from the public right away shall be treated with similar care intention. In form, terms of, uh, entries, penetration, materials and, uh. Fire escapes sharing, serving more than one story shall be located, shall not be located on either the street facing facades. And then, uh, so. Buildings, principal facade and parking, parking shall be, uh, subordinate in design and location of the building principal facade. And that surface, um, should be located on the rear or side of the principal building. And that the parking shall not be located in a setback between the building and a lot line adjacent to the public right of way. Basically, you can't have. Uh, cars in front of the, the, the principal home. And that the, uh, principal pedestrian entry shall be, uh, more prominent in design and placement than the vehicular entry to the garage. So I don't know if any of those corner lots or the principal facade and parking elements, anyone wants to scrutinize further?
Not substantively, but should you make the language about tying into the sidewalk where applicable, consistent with where you made the change in the previous section? If the in- intent is the same. Did all right of way there.
Like that?
Yep, that's what I was talking about.
Under the garage, are we implying that the people have to have a garage? We need to indicate that it's, if, if it occurs, that's needs to be considered, but. Is it, this indicating that the expectation is there are garages?
So would you, you thinking that you would do something like any in lieu of the?
I, I guess it was more placement. Of any vehi- vehicle into a garage if applicable or something as a way to. You know, I don't think we're intending to require parking to be within a garage. I don't know if it's necessary, but this kind of.
Like that?
Yeah, something like that, if that's, it's done with how it's done in other sections.
Yep, makes sense. Um, and then. So the next section, so. We took a look at this and there was a number of questions as it relates to if site plan approval for this section is required. Uh, based on. How straightforward some of these reviews would be, so the way I wrote this is that the, I removed a site plan review. From here and I added the section where a. Waiver from any of the above requirements, um, could be applied for, and I took a lot of the site plan, you know, the, in terms of a submission requirement. Copy and paste what was a site plan and added it to the, uh. MC MOD waiver section. Um, so I did want to circle up, I know that we had a number of kind of back and forths related to site plan review. So I think this is probably the, the number one thing I wanted to get from this group of whether or not we felt site plan was. Required for buildings of these scales or if that's something that, um, were ceding too much of, uh. Control is probably the wrong word, but, um, process. By waiving or omitting that section of the proposed bylaw.
Without having thought about it, it seems like it's something we would wanna keep site plan review and that's another argument, you know, to say, hey, listen, this. Yes, we're. Ceding, as you said, control in some respects, but we still are keeping site plan review limited as it may be. Um, you know, the, I think, I think we said the planning board would likely be the granting authority there, um. That's just my initial thoughts, especially with the pushback we've got already anyways, um. When just another. You know, this would be another argument to say, you know, why are we giving this away? I, I, I understand what you're thinking and I, I, you know, I think it, at the end of the day, works the same way. It's just my initial thoughts.
I mean, if we're allowed to have them, why wouldn't we maintain that, um? That process.
I think the thought being is what would the site plan review be reviewing? If the stormwater is being done under the stormwater bylaw. And there's a review with engineering associated with it. Then you're reviewing, you know. You're reviewing mostly for, I would say for screening, and then the question is, is that? Are you? Are you reviewing for things that are, um, impactful enough that warrants that? Time and effort from the applicant and planning board or whoever the granting authority is gonna be.
I think the neighbors would say yes.
It, it certainly gives them an opportunity to know what's being built before building permits issued. Cause otherwise you could just go down and file it, right?
And that's when we're doing site plan review, eh, there's the same, it's, it's, in some respects, it's almost like project manager, right? Like for the town. It's like the town's project manager, because yeah, you know, the, the, the engineering department reviews stormwater management plan. But sometimes there is, you know, disagreements over. Trying to think of something off the top of my head, but either way, we can, you know, make sure that's coordinated with. At the same time, in this respect, that screening is coordinated, that everything, every box is checked before any building permit gets applied for. But I understand the consternation, I guess it's, to me, it's just. If it's, yeah, if it's something that we do have control of, it's, it's, it is an argument for. For keeping it when seemingly the biggest consternation is why are we complying with this anyways? When it's being forced. And it's an easy thing for us to keep.
I'm still torn on. Personally, from an internal perspective, torn on what makes the most sense.
Yeah, I mean, personally, at the end of the day, if everyone said, let's go with this instead, I don't really have much. Pushback to that, but just as a. Initial reaction to it, that's my thoughts.
What if we kept it in as part of that public hearing process and if people say that this is a burden? That's too extreme, then it could be reevaluated to remove, but we're not gonna be able to add it afterwards, right? I mean, people would take exception to. To that process, right?
This is my, my only thought with that is people already don't understand the process to begin with. Now, we already have a, a slide in there with a flow chart telling them about. The process to get really, uh, through zoning as it is. Um, if we then ask, hey, do you think we should keep this? Yeah, I don't know if we get a educated answer or, or a initial reaction answer, sort of like I'm getting right now, to be honest.
I think that, I think you'd get, get the reaction of whatever involves more review of. Departments or boards. For projects. I think that's the, that would be your consistent feedback. And I guess that's the question is that whether or not that. I think that's just gonna be a gut reaction because they'll want to be as, as many, uh. Checks and balances and the question is whether or not we think there's a value with it. I, 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 to be honest, I go back and forth on this a bunch myself, you know, whether or not I think there's value or not.
So I guess we, we, it comes down to whether we think, what's our. At the end of the day, what is our, as a sort of subcommittee ultimate recommendation, um. Str- uh, the ask we, we, we wanna make the most, is it, you know, something like this? Or is it keep everything the same, eh, eh, with as much control as possible and try to convince. The public on the larger, um. Uh, overlay, or is it? Streamline this and, you know, if we are going to do. The absolute minimum, then maybe we try to wave of this too and say, it sticks with what we're doing, the absolute minimum we have to. So, but if we are trying to go for the, the larger overlay, I think, you know, we keep as much control as possible. Because at the end of the day, that'll at least help us explain why we're. You know, one of the many reasons that we as a subcommittee think that the larger overlay makes sense.
Can we table it? Can we table it for the evening and we think more?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think the, I, I think the one thing I'll say before we move off of this is just, I think that we need to think about. I don't know how much people are gonna get in the weeds of like site plan review or not, one way or the other. I, I kind of view the, the conversation as whether or not the, the map is good. On the merits and a lot of those finer details, I'm not sure. If we're, if we're arguing with people in the public about site plan review, then I think that we're. In a world of pain, because that, that means that we're into a level of detail that I don't think is gonna be helpful.
Agreed, but I think we need to sort of go into it with some sort of intellectual transparency when we say. We're having a bigger overlay, but we're keeping everything else the same, but we're not because. We would then have to point to this and say, you know, we are allowed to have site layer review, but we said we're not gonna have it. If we are gonna say that, everything else is the same.
That's fair. So, yeah, I think that's a good, good, I, suggestion, Rob, and I think we might make sense for us to ruminate on it a little bit more and we can. Circle back if we think that we wanna. Include that, I, I don't know, before we move off of this, I don't know Julie or Matt, if either one of you have any feedback as it relates to. Where your initial gut is.
I, I agree with a lot of what Greg has said, I, I think that, uh. You know, sort of the process of pitching into the community, they're. Gonna wanna hear that there is some. Level of review that's been reserved, uh. You know, sort of putting the lawyer hat back on for a minute, I, I'd assume that every statute or set of. Regulations that gets put out there, everyone thinks that they've done a, a really good job and there's no ambiguity in there and there's maybe no. You know, sort of. Points that are left to be argued and, you know, I, I, I think if we do reserve, uh, a degree of, of site plan review that. You know, unforeseen things that may come up that we're not thinking about right now, we may have the opportunity to. Uh, or the, the, the planning board would have an opportunity to have some input. So, uh, I think that's ultimately a, a good thing for the things we're not thinking about down the road.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. I, I just don't want it to be, and I don't understand all, I mean, I haven't been through the process, but. I just don't want it to be onerous, right? We were, we really, really want these to happen by right and not get caught up in bureaucracy and so. You guys who do it on a regular basis, hopefully can figure out where that line is.
Yeah. Okay, let's put this one as something to follow up on then, and then the last section we got in here, severability, which I think is just kind of a, uh. A generic catchall for any of these types of sections. And then I have, uh, these are all the sections that, um, looked as if. And then I have up, these are all the sections that um looked as if. Uh I didn't see them in the in our uh section one ninety four. For the definitions. So those are sections that we'd be adding to one ninety four and then you'd have the 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 section that we just reviewed. That would be a standalone uh overlay section. So uh Erin, I know that you mentioned that eh when you went through the other communities, I I. I would did not have a chance to review that. I think it was Quincy and. Was it Lexington was the other one you sent over? I was there anything in in there that you thought? Would be relevant that would make sense to be a potential addition to what we have in this draft?
Very very quickly, just to point out, if we were talking about earlier, the definition of multifamily is already in one ninety dash four. That's probably why it's not in here. I I should, I'll look it up to double check that, but.
I think that section, I think that one we need to actually edit because of the multifamily in one ninety four, I think is three or no.
Four or more families each in a separate dwelling, living independently.
So we need to edit that because in this case, three would be out as of right, but it doesn't count as multifamily.
No, I think for me it was um, well, I noticed the that we were missing the four units. Because if you read that, someone was asking me a question like, well, it's not reading to say, you know. I could only do four units, so I wanted to make sure that that was added somewhere, but also I just think um. Once this, you know, I did, I know you did the cleanup copy, but I think we may wanna just um, there's just a few other language things I think that would need to be asked. And I want or added and I wanna sit down with Steve to and and kind of run through that, but. Um, you know, some of these other ones have affordability components and things like that, so um I think it's just. Adding more clarification language, but other than that, I think uh we're heading in the right direction.
And then the one other thing that I, as we were going through this, that I remembered that I I think is missing is. I think we need to add some language um specifically excluding. Any lot that's not fully within the within the overlay district. So I think that's something that we need to add probably up in the um. Applic- you know, the establishment and applicability, you know, probably right here. Obviously, that's not the the final language, but just as a reminder. Okay, so in that case, uh it sounds to me as if, you know, in general. The working group is comfortable with a number of these, you know, kind of where we stand today. The outstanding thing is the site plan approval. And we'll, we can put that as on the agenda for the next meeting when we talk about this as people think about it a little more. Um, I'd ask, you know, I I know I heard Greg volunteer, but if anyone else is interested in going through this and providing. You know, I'll call it a series of red line comments back to what. The the version of this that we've been looking at, that would be greatly appreciated. And then uh Erin, it sounds like you'll go through it and you'll double check with town town council mull and if there's anything else that we need to. That he sees um that we need to clean up.
So I'm gonna need to sign off. Unfortunately, I was able to stay a little longer than I was expecting. Um. I just wanna see if someone could just, I've been taking notes here and there here. Someone could just take over for some of the notes. Don't all jump on it at one.
I can try to take over.
Um, and then I'll go through it too. Um. But the last agenda, you only have the one last agenda item to talk about the meetings, right? I feel bad. I have to get off.
Yeah, I I wanna go through the meetings and then I also I had a couple edits to the slides that I I was trying to react to a couple of things we heard. So I wanna go through a couple of slides um that I'm proposing and adding to the to the presentation. And I'd like to get feedback from the other members of the working group uh to make sure that. Uh people feel it's appropriate. Uh so tho- those are kind of the last couple of things I wanna go through before we adjourn.
The one thing I've been maybe, and I don't know if you added this slide was um. The question about subsidized housing inventory came up and it's come up with other folks as well, some information about that. I was able to pull some numbers. Of course, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think people think it's gonna move the needle a lot more than um than it actually is. And also people need to remember that it's all dependent on census figures for eh which won't be out till twenty thirty. So um I didn't know if that was something. Um, you had in your notes, but.
It's not, but it's a good, it's probably a good one that we should either add to the frequently asked questions or have a backup slide or both.
Okay, yeah, and uh. Yeah, um I think too a a question too is um for the district, the average parcel size as of now, I think I've had that question asked to me a few times as as well. Which right now is seven thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet.
So what was that?
Seven thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet.
Okay, I don't have that in here, but I will definitely add it.
I think that gives people a better idea.
Perfect, okay.
All right, I thank you so much, guys. I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving and feel free to reach out with any follow up questions and uh uh we'll we'll connect, Jim.
Yep, absolutely.
Have a good one, guys.